Called to order this special meeting for City of East Grand Forks. It is Tuesday, August 24th, 2018. It is now 5:52. Would City Park please call the roll?
Mayor Steve Gander?
Here.
Council President Mark Oldest?
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Russell?
Here.
Council Members Clarence Futter?
Here.
Michael Puck Shavinsky?
Tim Reapell?
Here.
Henry Twetton?
Here.
Mark D'Amers?
Present.
Those are the terms in the quorum. Number one, the only one, discussion of 2019 city budget. Carly, you want to start it up?
Yeah, first page of the little booklet, Budget Talking Points. And this is actually a takeoff where we were last year. And actually, all the items in number one are there from last year. And I guess we know, we're all aware of. The only thing would be is on the federal, on F, we are doing the target dollars this year. So that next year would be in 2022. South End Bridge, we've had some discussion on that. Assessment policy, we talked about that. Number four, bring financial reserves to target. I guess the question is, what is the city's target? I know last year we built in the reserves. And so, the policy which I attached in the back is 35% to 50%. And we are over the 50% now, so just to keep that in mind. And I also stated it there. And then number five, expand Civic Center West and refurbish VFW. It's in one. Six, restore trust. Seven was strengthen city school partnership bond. Eight was amend the city charter, which we're working on. And 10 is upgrade city facilities. So that came out of, if you turn the page, that came out of our visioning goals, which this came out of our visiting, visioning session. And then what I did was just a recap of what's in the booklet on, this is a beginning fund balance for 2018. We're assuming that what we started out will have, well, couldn't anticipate even having more. And then the total revenue without a levy in there and expenses. And that would be what our year-end fund balance would be.
So that $5,400,000 is the end of the year 2018?
2017.
Oh, that's...
And we're assuming that when we budgeted, we budgeted that there would not, we would, you know, break even.
Okay.
So we're hoping, you know, we plan on it being leased there. And then the next couple pages is just broke down on how the revenue is collected and what areas and how expenses are spent. And then on the third page, we have a little example of what a home's value is than their total property tax and to what different divisions that property tax go to, which is including ourselves, Polk County School District, school district approved, Watershed Ambulance, and Northwest Regional Development Center. So then on the next page, we have a recap of revenue and expenses that have been submitted by departments. And at this point, the revenue sources over or under is at $689,246. So I actually attach, I gave you some printouts today. The single sheet is just a recap of where our expenses were for 2017 as of July 31st and where they are for 2018 as of July 1st, 21st. So, 2018, excuse me. And so if you want to just, you know, look at that, we're close to target where we were last year. And then in another section, there's a legal size paper with all the highlighting on it. And there was a request to look at if we put the levy at 4%, 5%, 6%, 7%, and 8%, how that would affect homeowners. And that's a good question.
Yeah, I guess, if you don't mind, I'll kind of explain where...
Go ahead.
So over the last several years, as you're using C-Gone, going back to 2012, we've typically used the same houses for showing what the market value, where the market value is and then what the proposed levy increase does for each particular house. So when we got this, we worked with, I guess I worked with Ms. Anderson on that. She went and checked on, on where we're at with that. The particular problem with it this year, and where, why I'm bringing, why it's being brought forward to you in this particular manner is because the changes from the market value, as you can show, for each one coming up over the last few years. For example, the first home, number one, which is, you know, one of the, we call one of the lower value homes in town, typically was going up from 123 to 132 to 140. Went up significantly between 18 and, for taxes payable, 19. Same thing for home number two. Home number three, which is typically was started off around the $200,000 value back in 2013, 14, is now up to almost $300,000 in 2019. But however, this one took the least amount of jump this particular year, between 18 and 19. And the higher value home took a, again, a jump, but not quite as much. So, and the commercial took a significant increase, almost 21%. The highest, almost as high as the low valued homes. So, that being said, trying to speculate based on that and using the past, in the past, where it was moving up, seemed like more incrementally, you could kind of make, I guess, an educated guess as to how that might work out for the upcoming year. This particular year with the wide ranges and the significant increases, particularly in commercial and in the lower valued houses, we, me personally, I just didn't feel comfortable even making an educated guess on that, just because it is, I wouldn't have any reasonable certainty that would even be close, based particularly on the, on the lower end ones and on the commercial. So unfortunately, we will probably not have that information until sometime, what you said, in September, is what they told you.
And it's still very difficult to do because, you know, there, yeah, the market, the taxable market value has gone up, but how much has gone up because of new property? And how much has gone up because of all these other properties that are going up? And so, you know, I know we talked about how the true number comes with truth and taxation. And, you know, I guess, you know, we did last year, we went to 10%, we went down 8.5%. So we have an idea where we'll be. And I know we've talked to the county and the county can't give us any help, nor will they, nor for themselves, they, they just won't guess because it's too difficult to figure out. You know, if it was a mill like in North Dakota, it would be much easier, we could, we could give you a number.
So with that being said, kind of going back to this, so the actual, based on what our, the proposed levy increase would be and how that's going to translate to individual houses, is just, I'm not comfortable speculating at this particular point with the information that we have. So I guess my recommendation from now until that particular time would be to review what we're, we have coming up for the upcoming season and see where, where we're comfortable at and basically where we're at realistically. As the information that you have in front of you tonight shows, we have a particularly large gap. The majority of that gap is in the wages itself. There's a couple reasons for that. Number one, the police department, we did, we did adjust the overtime and we did, we did adjust what our part-time and seasonal help is, make it more realistic. I guess we've been particularly undercounting that, I guess, what you would say, over the last few years.
We're looking closer to actual numbers.
Yep.
Especially with the police and, and Park and Rack and Reed probably can answer better, but, you know, more participation means more employees and part of that was a pool. The pool isn't, you know, up and running and stuff, so.
I guess, and so with that, the wages that are shown in the, in the proposed budget here do, at this point, include what the, what the projected results are from the wage study. And I guess where we're coming in from, for the, for the remainder part of it, I can tell you where, so take, for example, employees that are, that are maxed out on their steps. So we penciled in a 2% wage increase is what's proposed here. So an employee that is maxed out on their steps right now, let's say it's step eight, so again, we're putting a 2% wage increase there, you know, so the changes that would be for the health insurance and some of the other incidentals, those, those employees average about 2.3% is what the, the cost to theirs, to theirs go up. However, where they, in particularly the newer employees that are moving up in steps, that's where you get a larger increase. They can be up as high as 14%. Particularly here's a couple of them, the new officers in the police department and a couple in the public works are also as well, are moving up into a little bit of that higher range. So if, those are the ones that they, that are moving, that have just started and are moving through the first two steps in that first year. So if you're past that, the cost per employee for that is roughly anywhere, it depends where they're at in the grade and that it goes from about 6% to 9% based on where they're So that's where we're at. So the majority of the, of the increase that we have right now is with the salaries. So I guess with that, take any questions, comments from the council on that. So we did look at our, at our capital improvements and our, our capital equipment. As far as capital improvements for street projects and that for next year, we don't really have anything planned for this upcoming year. We have some longer-term ones, but most of what we have coming up for, clearly almost everything that we have coming up for this next year will be included in that, in the, well, it used to be $250,000 in the proposed budget here. It's $300,000 for the incidental street improvements. So everything that Jason has planned for this upcoming year is included in for that. So the rest would be capital, capital equipment.
Do you have a question? So, just so I understand this correctly, the numbers in the wages you're counting for more realistic overtime and...
Part-time, correct.
Part-time people. In the past and with the projections of their revenue and expenses, over the years, we've been pretty, you know, what we know is going to, so where's that money coming from then that we're not projecting, showing from last year, true numbers?
The cost overruns?
Yeah.
On that? Ultimately, it, it, it really depends on where, where we come in for the rest of our, the rest of our expenditures. So if we, say if we overspend to a certain degree, like say 50% over in our, in our overtime costs, that then comes, so that when you overspend like that, that's where, that would just be spend down from the, from the fund balance. However, if there are, if we underspend in other areas, you know, it's kind of a wash. So our, so our fund balance really becomes how much do we overspend versus how much do we underspend in other areas that we've budgeted for.
Truly, I mean, we're not showing a negative spending in the general, general fund?
Correct.
Is more of an allocation of...
Correct.
Moving tier to here.
That's correct.
Just want to make sure that people understand that it's not like we're going in the hole with the wages.
But if we're doing that, if we're adding a more realistic overtime and part-time wages, in the past, if we've just been under-budgeting that and pulling it from somewhere else, we need to adjust on both sides. We can't just leave those other ones then fat where you're pulling the stuff from. You have to go into each of those funds and say, let's get those to where they need to be so that, because we're not going to, we're not going to depend on this, you know, overage or...
And that would show...
Potential under-usage, you know.
And that would show in the CAFR, I don't know, Carla, if you have.
Well, and part of it is that, you know, we're very conservative on revenue. We only put down what we know we'll get. And sometimes we've gotten more and so we've collected more revenue than we anticipated. So that's part of it.
I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly that.
Yep, yep.
But as Mark's point is, what I was leading down to is that, let's say that we not getting any more revenue than we had in the past, we're unfortunate that we have been, I mean, where does that lead us with those other, as Mark indicated also, is where does it lead us, that money in those fund balances? Why is that money there and why isn't it, we're not showing it down further than, I mean, are we just...
Can I talk about the ones where we maybe wouldn't spend as much as budgeted?
And you're moving it to cover the overtime or to cover the part-time?
Well, I guess when you say moving it, that's, I guess we don't necessarily move it. It, it, it's, sometimes it's kind of, so if you look at, you say you have your general fund pot of money in...
No, but when you're looking at it, you're looking at, you have the police listed out.
Yep.
You have more overtime. So where did, that money comes from the general fund. Okay, so there's a fund sitting there.
Yep.
I mean, are we not realistically having the right general fund balance in that, hey, we built it up to this number and we have it as, are we not, in the past, have we not looked at the true number where it should actually be then? I mean, are we over...
As far as, as far as the general, as far as the fund balance? Well, the changes to the fund balance at the end of each particular year, depending if, let's say if we, if we overspent on certain areas too much and we, and we didn't underspend in certain areas, it would be a net loss. The fund balance would, would then go, would take a step back if we, it, it depends whether it's net positive or net negative on that particular year.
Interesting you're saying that, that's, but are we, so right now, we're just truly just say, okay, well, we have all these, this fund balance here, but we need to make sure we're actually showing it here. That's what you're doing instead of having it just sit there in a, you know, in that big balloon of general fund. Is that you're showing in the right, where you're saying it's going to be?
Correct. I guess, so what you're saying then is, is, once we, we have an accurate number of kind of where we are at and we kind of know where we're at now. We know where we were at the end of 17 and kind of what our spending trends and our revenue trends are right now, so we can have an idea what, what our overall fund balance will most likely be at the end of 18. Is that what you're saying is, and then do we, do we take a look at then, how much do we want to move on that or...
Yeah, but I want everybody, I mean, to understand that it's not a, we're not taking away from the reserve balance or whatever balance we have sitting over here and all of a sudden now we're funding it, bringing it over here. So we're actually not, it's there in the general fund to be used for these sources, but it's, we're actually identifying the true number actually that, from that department and this department of where we're at.
Okay, yeah.
And where then we can see where there's, we have the most personnel need.
Oh, I see what you're meaning.
And that, let's say it's Park and Rack for part-time for the summer or whatever it may be or whatever. We're recognizing that, that it's, this is where we have our personnel. So I just, I just want to make sure we're not, people are, then we understand everything correctly, that it's just not, we're all of a sudden, woo, we have this much money on overtime.
Oh, I see what you mean, yes.
Nancy?
Yeah, I was going to say, I just know from the five budgets that I do, I probably have over 100 line items and I may spend more, like $800 more on one line item and I may have 2,500 that I estimated, you know, in, in utilities or insurance that don't get paid. So for us to try to accurately reflect the overtime, you know, as actual and then try to take it out of those where we're not spending as much would be kind of difficult. I think we're kind of just estimating each line item and sometimes we spend less and sometimes we spend more. So it would be, it would be hard to show that accurate reflection of how we're kind of evening it out without taking a little bit from each line.
I guess, I think I know where you're going, is now that we have our, our fund balance in place, you know, in, in line where we want it to be, we have a, a good capital improvement plan as far as with our capital equipment and that. Yes, and now our focus is to, is where, is to accurately have our line item budgets be more accurate than it has been in the past. That's, I think if that's where you're going, is we're trying to accurately show where, where our personnel costs are in...
Because that's our biggest cost, is personnel.
By far.
To actively reflect, actually reflecting where those costs are in the, in the personnel is what, you know, is nice, if you want to use nicer, correct way to make sure that we know, hey, this is our personnel cost. This is our true personnel to the best of ability that we know right now.
In what it is per department.
My, my point is, is if we're going to add 100,000 extra in overtime to adequately reflect, the overall budget for that department shouldn't go up by 100,000. It should stay the same. It's up to whomever to figure out what they've been stealing from, or...
Using the money.
Using the money, borrowing from other portions of that. Otherwise, you're just double adding. I mean, you're, you're adding something that you've already been doing and then you're just giving an extra overtime budget on top of that.
You've got an increase in the one side, but there should be a decrease over here.
Well, I guess...
Because we haven't been burning down our...
No, we haven't.
Our finance.
And I...
So it's been coming from within the department fund.
Not so much as far as the department. I mean, some departments will overspend and others won't. And that can vary year to year. I think Carla addressed it a little bit as far as in the past that we've been, we're, some of the, I guess, I don't like to use this term, but somewhere some of the cushion has been, and I guess I don't like to use that term, is that we have typically been very conservative on what our, what our revenues were going to be. So when we say that we overspent, it's, it's not saying that the, let's just, we'll use the police department, for example, with their over, with the overtime and stuff. It's not saying that, that in the end, they came in and, and only spent what was budgeted for their entire department. They maybe have overspent their entire, or what was allotted for the entire department. However, that may be made up by additional revenues that we didn't know about, addition, you know, you know, things that came in higher than what we anticipated. So it's, it's not like it's, it's not like where it, that department gets that amount of money and when they use it up, they use it up. We have, where some have overspent and some haven't and it changes from year to year. They might overspend their entire budget.
Just for example, in, in 2017, from what we budgeted for revenues and what we collected, we collected 332,000 more. And then if you look at the expenses from what we budgeted and what we spent, we didn't spend $90,763, which is 1% of the total budget. You know, and we have to remember that, you know, we have all those volatile expenses like fuel, which we never were, know where it's going to be. So we, you know, usually we have to budget higher on utilities because of weather and because of streets. We had never know how, how much snow we were going to get. So those are, are areas where we will always budget higher than maybe it will happen, but we have to be covered.
And again, in those, fuel is, fuel is higher in the utilities, but, and they make up, as far as what are, what are, other than our personnel costs for our departments, the utilities and fuel, depending on which department, make up a, probably the next most significant cost, particularly in the law enforcement, public works and fire department. Fuel and utilities take up a lot of, is probably the, the next highest reset after personnel.
Again, we have all the papers in front of us and we're all combing through the numbers and if anyone watches this as a live stream and just for conversation, one more time this year, we've lost $90,661 in local government aid. LGA is dollars that are sent back to us by the state of Minnesota for the purpose of helping to fund our operation. There's a formula that has several points and that was included. The LGA formula came out in some of the comments that, that went out with this packet to the, several points of the LGA calculation formula. And we're kind of caught in a bit of a pickle in the pre-1940 homes that we lost in the flood. I think that's still coming back to haunt us in that formula. But not to mention the fact that we're a growing community. Our property values are increasing as in the free market, homes that come up for sale are bringing good dollars. And when that happens, that also adversely affects the formula. Our tax base is growing, our community is growing, and so we're expected to stand on our own more than we have previously. Well, that comes to almost a 2% increase in our levy just to cover the loss of local government aid. Okay, just that one item alone is close to 2% increase in the levy to cover that item. In addition to that, I guess for conversation, we can say there is some sort of top number increase that we would feel comfortable as a levy increase to our residents. And so we can have that number, all of us in the back of our mind, we can talk about it whenever we want to. But with that top number in mind and then knowing that 2% of that or close to that's going to cover the LGA change, now we can start to work our budget in reverse to make it all line up and make it work. I think we also can say for, for consensus, at least I for one, don't want to see a decrease in our general fund, excuse me, in our reserve balance. Okay? I don't want to see that go down and eventually that's going to have to creep up because that carries as a percentage of our, whether you want to talk about revenues or spending. So as that would naturally grow with inflation, that reserve balance is going to have to grow with inflation also, little by little. It doesn't have to go up crazy, but if the number doesn't change, the percentage is going to go down because our, our economy is growing in our community, in our city budget. So those are just some thoughts that I would throw out, covering close to 2% with LGA, some top number of levy increase that we're all going to be okay with. And, and for me, I do not want to see a drop in our, in our reserve balance. If anything, maybe hold the line. I don't know that it has to go up at this moment in such a tight, this is a tight budgeting year by all standards. This is a tight budgeting year and that's okay. I mean, we'll have enough money to do excellent work for our people and yet it's, it's going to be another lean exercise is what we're going through.
In the CAFR on page 10, the general fund's fund balance, the unassigned fund balance is at 54.3% of expenditures and 51.1% of revenues. And our fund balance says 35 to 50, just so everybody knows that.
That doesn't necessarily have to go up or down at this point. If we hold the line, we're still pretty happy with that.
Yeah, I would think we would not need to, especially with the additional increase, we would not need to any, plan for anything else into that. We would still, even with, we would have, we would still cover it based on, even with the inflation.
So where do you want the discussion to lead to now, Mr. Murphy and Carla? What do you guys, direction you guys want from, what was your plan, I guess?
Well, I guess, the, the plan is, is that the majority of, the vast majority of our increase is in costs that we will not be able to change without really changing what we have for employees. The majority of it, roughly 10% of it is, is staffing levels. Staffing levels are, are sometimes difficult to predict because, well, I mean, is to fine tune it because when you have, it depends where, how many employees you have at the top of their list and if employees retire, you know, that drops off a high wage earner for that particular position. Usually then you get somebody in at the lower, so, you know, and we don't really always know when people retire and that. So it's, you, you have to assume that everybody that's here is going to stay here for the remainder of the, this upcoming year and that they're going to obviously follow what our personnel policy and our union contracts show. So with that being said, without any changes in any retirements or people leaving and getting a lower, newer person in, the, the personnel is, is really about, is 10%. And like I said, it's, it's based on that, in some of our larger departments, we do have younger people that are, are newer employees that are moving up through those steps, which causes it to go higher than the 2%. Like I said, though, going back to where the ones that are at the top of their step with the, with the 2% and a, with, happening with their insurance, it's about 2.2, 2.3. two point two, two point three. The remainder is the ones that are, are moving up through the steps. So I, I guess going back, so I guess, I'm not trying to be a bearer of bad news or, or anything, but the, but to be a realist in this, um, if we're going to stick to a number, like say five percent or something like that, um, I don't really see a way that we would do that without changing our personnel levels.
What if your revenue forecast was not as conservative? I mean, no, I don't want, I don't want to.
It would be a lot.
Be radical with it, but, I mean, are we talking, could you shave a percent off that or three percent off that and still come within something that's reasonable?
Well, if our trends continue, I know I said it was last year was like three hundred thousand and then.
Right, I think part of that, part of that was, um, we were still waiting for money from the campground, which is kind of throwing us off.
I'm going to stick my neck out here a little bit. If we, if we change that and we're less conservative, we could probably shave a couple percent.
And part of that is that we get reimbursed for training for the police and fire. So when we get reimbursed for training, we also spend more.
And that does, and that's not always anticipated income either.
No, so when I put that amount and I just, you know, you kind of put what they put got last year. So it could be higher, but then personnel is higher also. And sometimes it's higher than what we budgeted, but I can't put, you can't put the revenue against that expense because the payroll has to be in the payroll expense. So I understand what you're saying, but it's not quite as easy as that because we still have to claim it as a, a revenue and we have to claim it as an expense.
I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I, I'm thinking if you're, if you're talking maybe like, realistically, I could, the end in the wash, I, I would say maybe a couple percent.
One thing that's been tossed around from time to time is, um, the possibility of other revenue sources and the possibility of selling an asset that the city owns that may generate revenue and may actually reduce some costs on the back end. So that all should be part of a budget discussion as well.
We did talk about that as far as staff as well, um, what some of our revenue sources are, um, and what we could do for these. These tend to be controversial and not always overly well received, but there's certain things that we could look at doing. For example, um, what we charge for protection for, um, our events. For example, things like Wild Hog, you know, we, we don't charge anything for them, but Grand Forks does. Events like, um, the up, rocking up north and things like that, we, we're not really re, kind of recouping our costs. And those are events that are not so much the like nonprofit or, or, these are for-profit events by private companies. Should we be increasing what we charge to them to at least cover our overtime costs and adequately staff them? We've, in the past, we've tended maybe understaffed them a little bit. And we don't really request our full reimbursement on that as far as what our true costs are. The other thing, again, these are not popular ideas, but one thing that was brought up was Parks and Rec, what do we do for our service fees? Do you know, do we compare ourselves to Grand Forks and, and bill a little bit more accordingly to what it costs for activities over there? That could raise our revenue and help offset some of the costs, particularly where we've raised, um, the personnel costs for the, for the part-time and seasonals, particularly in Parks and Rec.
And more unpopular is the snow removal, the sidewalks that we're cleaning through Park and Rec. We shouldn't be cleaning sidewalks for businesses. That should be their own deal. We should be charging them for that. The parking lot, we should be charging for that. We're going to have to replace that pretty soon and it's going to cost us some major bucks.
I just wanted, um, to talk about the revenues that we budgeted last year. Um, for example, we budgeted, our collection of different taxes, we budgeted six point one, we collected six million. So was the difference about a hundred and fifty. And, you know, we budgeted what the actual levy is, we budget what the franchise fees we think it's going to be, but we were short a hundred and fifty. So I actually wasn't conservative enough there. We don't know what, what property taxes we will collect. We didn't collect seventy-four thousand dollars that was sent to the taxpayer. And I did mention, we collected a hundred and thirteen more in recreation other. That was on, from the campground, I believe. We actually, for a long time, didn't know what they're going to give us. And it's always kind of been a battle of what they're going to give us, what they're going to accept for expenses. So that was a hundred and thirteen. So now out of the three hundred, we're down to two hundred. Um, if you look at building permits, we budgeted fifty, but we collected sixty-four thousand, but we never have any idea how many people are going to build or not build. So I'm not going to up that number because I don't feel comfortable doing that because the year before it was probably at forty-five thousand that we collected. So when we look at these, we look at not just last, we look at, you know, a two, three year cycle. And so I guess I'm kind of, I, I don't know how comfortable that we would be to up somebody of those.
Yes, I'm, I'm not meaning to put Reed on the spot here or anything, but one that maybe would be, now would be a good point to, to look at where we're at with it would be Parks and Rec because this last year, we probably have a much more accurate view of what our potential is. We have a much better, um, advertising and collection process for, um, for the activities. I'm going to say just, I'm just saying, previously, there was a lot of uncollected fees and things like that. I think we're, we have a much better idea where, what our potential is there and what our, what the actual usage is based on what the fees are because we said we, we, we're collecting virtually all of the fees now, whereas before that wasn't always the case.
I think what's in front of you for the budget for two thousand and nineteen in the registration fees is very, fairly accurate to what we've been collecting the last, from two thousand and sixteen forward. Since the website was put into use, we've been much better at collecting those fees. So I think those are fairly accurate. The only one that I see that we could maybe be a little bit less conservative, conservative in to offset the increase in the part-time salaries would be the swimming pool because we've budgeted the same this year as we did, or for nineteen as we did in eighteen, we knew in eighteen that we weren't going to have a full season. So now knowing we'll have a full season in nineteen, we could probably be a little less conservative there. That's why our salaries are higher in swimming pools because we're budgeting for the first time for a full year. So there's extra wages to be paid there. The other one that Carla just mentioned, the other culture recreation, we could probably, maybe we're safe, we've been over two hundred thousand dollars the last few years in payouts from, from, from that and we're still budgeting one eighty-four. So there's, there's a few costs there that could be. The only other way I, that I see in Parks and Rec, if we're going to increase the revenues on this to more closely reflect our increases in our costs and wages, is to look at the fees. Our wages have gone up as minimum wages risen and we haven't, I don't know when the last time the fees were increased. I know when we put the website into use, we increased the fees nominally to cover that , uh, processing fee that we have to the website, but other than that, I'm not sure. I haven't looked at what a wage increase or a, a fee increase would mean revenue wise, but that would certainly be something that could be looked at to garner a little bit more. I don't know how much of it is going to make up in comparison of what we're paying wages without looking at it.
The other increase in our revenue in two thousand and seventeen is that we had insurance proceeds that we didn't budget for of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, which was the windstorm that damaged many buildings in, um, the city, especially the VFW and Stoss Park.
The most of that went out as.
Right, it went out as a cost, but we have to put in as revenue. So we didn't budget that revenue. So that, out of the three, three thirty, we really don't have any wiggle room because they were things that we didn't really anticipate that were going to happen.
Do we know with, sorry, just speaking freely, I guess, do we know with the tax variance from budget to actual in seventeen of a hundred and fifty thousand, is that due to, is that something we over budgeted or I guess under budgeted? Or is that something?
What page are you on?
Page seventy-six.
Is that something we, like, taxes were paid and we're expecting that coming back? You know, there's seventy-five thousand in property taxes. Are we expecting next, this year to recoup that seventy-five thousand or is that just, it didn't get budgeted right, or it didn't get calculated right or?
Somebody just didn't pay.
Typically, those are, are people that, that don't pay their property taxes.
Or they're late, came in.
Yeah.
So I mean, so that, so some of that seventy-five thousand could be.
It'll come in next year or the year.
It'll eventually come in. It's hard to predict which year it'll come in. It depends whether it's, it, it could go out, I forget what the, it changes typically. Commercial is less and residential, I think, is five years now. I don't quote me on that, but as far as how long it takes for a property to go tax forfeiture if they don't pay their taxes, um, so then when the property sells, you get that back. So it could be anywhere from one to, let's say, one to five years when you would get that payback. It'll eventually come back. It's very, very rare that a property tax will not, never be collected because usually it's put on as lean for the sale, um, when it comes in.
So from past years, does that just get rolled into the?
Correct.
Property tax line?
Correct.
So there's no separate line of past property taxes due?
No, no.
No, it just comes, i- i- if it's, if it's been sold and it comes, it comes in as part of the, when we get our property check, tax disbursement and I, I, Carla, I believe that sometimes they have like a note on there saying it's.
Right, it says the years are coming in, but we don't split it.
But then, like, the other big one for, or, on that taxes was what, franchise tax or?
Correct, and I, I know we overestimated in, in our, um, electric from the city and, you know, people are conserving energy and that is dependent on weather too, cold and heat.
And that's a range, right?
And so we adjusted that, yeah. And, and that also is.
No, it's, it's a percentage of what they sell.
It's a percentage of what they sell. But we also have in there, we have NSP, we also have in there, uh, cable TV and NSP was less. You know, if we have a warmer winter, then we don't get as much franchise tax from them either because people aren't using it.
One question you have, what out there, listen, we have specials that we paid for. How many, how much out there of unpaid specials is that? Say it's on a bare lot that sits there and that never sells. I mean, is that, you're not counting that as future down the road estimation?
Well, especially.
I'm sorry, that wouldn't affect the general fund though.
No, but.
Because that would, that would go to pay that bond, yeah. As far as what's out there, I, off the top of my head.
Yeah, it doesn't affect the general fund, the only thing that would affect it would be.
I understand that, I asked the question because I want to. Yeah, there, there is, yeah, it's, it's probably significant.
Because we have.
Yeah, it's significant, but what it is offhand, I don't.
You can get to me later.
So I was thinking a minute. Well, I think probably our staff are looking for some direction from us as to what would we want to see them do to bring this to some point of balance. And how do you balance it? You balance it by expenses, of course, matching revenues. And they need to know then from us as policymakers, for example, a levy increase, what are we okay with, what are we comfortable with? And then some direction on savings, if there is to be savings, to, to make everything line up and match up. So I would think they would want some direction from us in these areas.
I mean, even if you look at the person, let's say, just take concentrated, taking the personnel cost, I mean, let's say you put that aside, I mean, what else are you going to do? I mean, where else can it come from, the cuts?
Typically, what we've done is capital, we've, we've, I guess, I don't know if this is the real term or not, rejiggered when we have our capital equipment costs. Reevaluated, there you go. Um, and, but that's, that's really where we've, where we've balanced it in the past is capital equipment.
So if we wanted to get to five percent, say, there's a magic number, and you said pretty much you've got ten percent built in with personnel, what kind of, how many personnel are we talking about having to reduce?
Depends where they come from. Um, you know, obviously part-time, they're less expensive, but they, you know, they'd be more. Depends if we want to get to five percent, that's, that'd be, let's, okay, let's, let's assume the numbers are the same, let's say for the overtime, um, and it, it's kind of a difficult question to answer because if you, if you move the police a little bit, um, you know, and then you got, overtime could be adjusted because of minimum standards or whatever. So let's see if we got.
Five percent is about two forty-five, six forty-four.
Yeah, so you'd be, you'd have to roughly, two hundred, two hundred and fifty, let's say five percent.
Probably.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Four employees.
Oh, and then you'd still be left with a deficit of four forty-three.
You got that park administrative assistant is at sixty-two, which is not, is included in that top number?
It is or is not?
Is, is included in that five oh five. I just put that in there so you realize that of, of that ten percent, one point two, six percent of is, is that position. So if we had, you know, two forty-five.
Two forty-five is what we would gain, but we'd still be short four forty-three.
Well, you said five, you said five percent, so.
That would be five.
Took the five, yeah, five percent, which is half of five oh five.
So you're saying roughly four positions, roughly.
And then we would not fill that position. So that'd be, yeah.
Four plus not fill.
So it's five.
Right.
You know, when, whenever we talk this way, I always, I think it's important to say over and over again to our good people, to our, our staff that we have, doing a good job, doing an excellent job, they should feel and know that as long as they continue to give their all to the good of our city, we want to have them continue on. And we would always look for ways, if, if there is going to be any reduction in staff level, you know, through attrition or, or other ways, you know, not filling a position. But we would never want to put our folks on edge that, oh, boy, here we go, because there really is enough money here to do a really good job of running this city and keeping the good people, the ones who, again, super dedicated, super effective, super efficient, uh, keeping them here and knowing that you show up, you do your work in a really good way, we're glad to have you.
I don't, I would agree on, I think, I don't think myself, I can only speak for myself, I don't have a target on any one department or people in general. My point is, is if we're going to talk about budgets, we should talk about budgets and what causes the budget and what our options are. And taking things off the table and not discussing them kind of doesn't do the purpose. Not, and like I said, it might not be the best option, but it's an option and we need to address all options. And it's on TV and it's in public and we need to, you know, show that we are thinking about those type of things. And I agree, I think if you cut five people, that's, it's not only, it would be a five percent reduction in the levy, but it'd probably be a ten percent reduction in the level of service we could provide. You know, I mean, we do have, I think we do have employees that outperform, outperform their dollar value, um, and we are a service organization. So I just want to make sure that we understand, everybody understands what that means. If we want to get to five, it's five or s, five people, you know, and, you know, what, what level of service that ends up happening, you know? And that's the reason why I bring it up.
There's quite an effort in, in all of, of our economy right now, be it the, the service sector, the manufacturing sector, everybody's looking for ways to streamline and to make things efficient. And I think, you know, one of the things that, that we've learned is individuals right there where the work is performed, they know what bugs them. They know where the bottlenecks are in the flow of their production for that day. You know, whether they are in the parks department or in public works, they think, you know, if I had one more complete socket set on this tractor right now, I would not have to travel across town to whatever, tighten up my something. It's just a silly example. And, and there are millions of examples like that. So I guess that would be my thought too, is talking to the, to the people that work for us. So I guess that would be my thought too, is talking to the, to the people that work for us, with us. Always be looking for ways that, you know, what frustrates you? What takes away your efficiency, the flow of your work? And if it is some technology need that you might have or whatever, make us aware of that. Because we do want to take away those obstacles to your efficiency that ultimately would make you even more productive. Not that you have to go at a frantic pace, but actually take away the thing that's keeping you from doing the thing your best, the best way that you can. And, and I guess for our departments, I know you guys are all about this, but as those would come to you, I'm sure you're finding ways to, to just streamline all that we do so that our people can be as effective as possible.
Basically, it comes down to what we've talked about with personnel, but also comes down to the capital. So basically, we have to look at that personnel plus that. And come back and say, okay, this is how would this would affect if this happened or this happened? I mean, are you wanting us to tell you that I need to tell Jason he's not getting this this year? Is that what, I mean, is that what you guys, example, Jason, so don't worry about it.
No, I, I guess where, where I would look for direction on that's, let's say, and I'm just going to speak hypothetically here. Let's just say you, as a council, you're comfortable with five percent levy increase. And so we as staff then have to meet, you know, the budget's going to have to meet that, that, that dollar amount. I guess then what I would look for the council, from the council is what areas do you prioritize? I use this as an example. And it's from previous positions that I've held where it's been, you got, well, we need to run the city like a business. You know, so, you know, business only has a certain amount of money, so you, you gotta fit your expenses into that. So, and they say, well, we're going to do this. So come back with whatever recommendation to bring it down, you're, you're only going to get this much. And, and they tell you to run it like a business. Well, I hate to be callous like this, but if, if you're, if you're going to run it like a business and if that's the case, well, then as far as administrator, my, my first recommendations would be, even though we put all this money into it, and that would be the pool. You know, the pool's a money loser every year. It just, we know what it is. It's a service that up until this point, you know, the council, you, you know that it's something that people enjoy and you're willing to spend the money on it. And you're willing to subsidize the loss. It is what it is. The second thing is where, the next one we would look at where we, where we suffer losses, we would either have to reduce what our services as far as what we provide for recreational amenities, meaning like the ice time, hockey, those type of things. Or we would have to dramatically look at what we're charging for those. So if we were going to run it like a business, those would be my first two recommendations because they're, they're subsidized and they're not the same thing as, like, say, police protection where you have to, you know, patrol the streets and provide that type of services. Not fire department, it's not snow plowing and lawn mowing. It's, they're things that are not.
Not needed, they're one.
They're not, they're not required services. So I guess that, to answer that, then I would say where, where would your priorities be?
Can I take a step back to personnel just because?
Sure.
You admit, can I ask the chief, what is our minimum staffing requirements? Is there a policy or is it?
Yes, we have, we have a policy, or I don't know if it's a problem. It's not actually in our policy manual, but we do have our standard practice. During the daytime, our, our shift levels are four officers are scheduled. It's sergeant and three officers. In the evening, it's a sergeant and four officers. And so during the daytime, our minimum is one person working the desk and two on the street. So one officer can be away at vacation, training, sick, whatever, without causing us to bring anybody else in. So that's basically being one officer working the desk and dispatch, two in the field. At night, that changes to one on the desk and three in the field, except in an attempt to reduce our overtime hours. Basically, it's, I believe, Thursday, Friday and Saturday nights. We, we kind of squish that in for that third person. We'll have two people at the start of the shift, two people at the end of the shift if someone's gone before we call in overtime. And it's just from seven at night to three in the morning where we call in that third, third body. The other days of the week, it's from nine to two. And actually, I think it's Tuesdays where we actually will go down to just one officer on the desk and two in the field. So we do try to minimize the amount of overtime called back by having those, those figures sit in. So in theory, in the evening, it's one and three is our minimum. But there are, basically every night of the week, we'll squish that in to either a five or an eight hour overtime versus a twelve hour overtime if we're short staff.
What's the? I thought a little while ago it was a three hour, or three person minimum total, but now it's four. It's four with the.
It's been that forever as long as I've been here.
I guess, is there a potential to, if you have a reduction to that minimum or below that minimum, can you staff a dispatcher or someone like that? That's probably cheaper than bringing in a whole nother officer on overtime? Or, or is there, is there another opportunity for someone else to do the dispatching rather than have to have?
There's various options that you could look at. We do have, our administrative assistants are trained as dispatchers as well. They're included in the overtime rotations.
But like during the day, if someone calls in sick or something, instead of having a police officer there, could you rotate one of the admin?
Do that at times. It's, it's not an automatic, but we, they still have their regular duties that they have to fill as well. So it's not like you could do that on a, on a daily basis, but they do fill those positions at times. If you're looking to do it on a full-time basis, the options we would have to look at would be going to Polk County for our dispatching or hiring dispatchers. Problem with hiring dispatchers, I don't think you would really gain anything because you have to fill in extra bodies to cover for overtime, sick leave, actually not for overtime, but for vacation, sick leave, all those things. You wouldn't be just hiring four dispatchers to replace four officers. You'd have to probably hire four and have several part-time people that are hopefully going to be available on call. And in reality, it's not going to happen. It would be very, very difficult to make that work. You could go to Polk County, but as I've stated to virtually all of you before, and I'd be more than happy to discuss it again with anybody, I, I truly believe our service level both to our citizens and our officers will be decreased significantly.
I guess, can I just, as far as, unless this has changed, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, usually the, the state has what they call recommended service level or recommended officer ratio for how many, how many, what the population you have in your city. We are higher than that. I mean, I don't think there's a, as far as I know, there's not a penalty if you go below that, that recommended number. We are higher than that. However, our call volume is significantly higher than a city of nine thousand, just because of the bleed over we have with, with Grand Forks and that. So the, so the policy that we have for our minimum levels, that's a, a policy that is an internal policy that has been determined here within the city of East Grand Forks as far as the service level that we need. It's not a, I just want to make sure, that's not a state mandated policy.
We're, we're a rare agency that does their own dispatching, especially with officers. So that also inflates our officer numbers. At our department meeting today, there was a discussion of comparing us to Thief River Falls, for example. And I pointed out that in Pennington County, Thief River Falls is obviously the county seat. They're the main city. Pennington County Sheriff's Department dispatchers are doing the dispatching for Thief River Falls P D. Those dispatchers know the community. They know where they're sending those officers to. They, they obviously are, are well acquainted with what's going on in the community. For us, if we were to use Polk County as our dispatchers, you know, I have Crookston residents typically, not always, but the vast majority of them are Crookston residents. They know Crookston quite well, but they don't know East Grand Forks very well. So that's where my biggest argument is, is despite the fact they're obviously professionals, they do as good a job as they possibly can. They don't know our community. They don't know our streets. They don't know our city. They don't know the events that are going on here because they're not here. So in my opinion, you're automatically making the job less safe for our officers if you were to choose an outside agency to do the dispatching.
It just, to me, it seems like to use, we're kind of joining two things, right? You have the extra, we've increased our minimums, but part of that minimum is someone that's sitting in the dispatch. You know what I'm saying? Is it, to me, it seems like, and I don't mean to under, underplay that role, but to me, it seems like a waste of good. Officer that could be out in the street, you know, instead, especially if there's a reduction in force because of sickness or vacation or for whatever reason. It just, so that's my, my biggest thing is I just, it feels like we're bringing someone else in and we still got, we have someone that's already on duty. You know what I mean?
Can I make one comment on that? And this is something that, that is a little bit more personal to me just due to the fact that, I'm not sure if all of you know, but I, I have a law enforcement degree as well. Bachelor's in, in law enforcement. That was actually what I was going to do was be a police officer before I came into this. So I, I watch this a little bit closely. Realistically, for the, one of the, one of the items I was in here is, you know, for the budget questions, you know, where could we combine services and, and those type of things? Realistically, it would, if we could combine some of their stuff with Grand Forks would be, would be very beneficial. However, we are prevented from doing that due to the fact that they are another state. Theoretically, we could, we could combine some of our dispatching. I believe they do that over in Mar, in Morehead and Fargo. But, but Morehead is larger than us and they're also the county seat over there. But the issue, so the, the big thing what we have is where we're located, as far as the dispatching in it, is that we have to, we have our, our jail here to, to house these, house these people. Because with where we're located and having Crookston as our county seat where the, where the jail is, is if we can't house them here, we have to most likely immediately transport them over to Crookston, which means an officer is out of service.
Well, just to interrupt, there are a couple of people that are running for sheriff right now. Maybe one of their planks should be that they're going to have a sheriff in town in their biggest city, ready to take one of those people. I mean, that's, sorry for, I mean, we are in a tough spot, but I think everybody else in the county kind of forgets that, oh, by the way, we, we're part of Polk County too. You know, so.
I understand that. But what I'm saying is, is if we could combine particularly our, our holding cells, if we could combine our dispatching and jail with Grand Forks, it would actually lead to a more efficiency. However, we can't do that because if we send a prisoner over there, even if, even for ten minutes, if they're locked up in there, then now they're basically the property of North Dakota. They're in their system and they can demand extradition back to Minnesota, which really complicates it here. So, so as far as the police department, our, our biggest area for collaboration is really excluded from us because it's another state.
If you're talking primarily just Monday through Friday daytime hours, rather than calling someone in, use one of the on-duty staff. As I mentioned, we do that already with, with our secretarial staff, administrative assistants. They step in quite often. But, but again, they have their, their typical duties that you can, you can get away with it for a little bit, but you can't do that on a daily basis.
But we shouldn't be short on a daily basis either.
We normally aren't.
Right. So, I mean, if that's our plan.
But if, for example, officers, we have an officer going to training for a week and another officer takes vacation, we're now short for an entire week. It's difficult to take somebody away from their job for a week. It's, and we try not, we try to avoid having people go to vacation and, and send them to training at the same time, but sometimes it just happens. Along the other issues, potential issues, if you start doing that on a regular basis, you may wind up having contract issues with the L A L S. They might argue that you're now having overtime taken away from them. I've heard that discussed. It's never been brought up. Nobody's ever actually formally brought it up to me, but I've heard that discussed.
By all means. I mean, and thinking about it from a staffing perspective, is there a potential then for float officers or something, you know, and granted, it's a bigger organization, but the hospital has nurses twenty-four hours a day. They have minimum staffing levels, all those type of things.
But you could look at part-time officers. You know, it's not an uncommon practice to have part-time officers that are, that are licensed from, I'm not sure if it's changed, but sometimes they have a different license requirement for, than a full-time officer. That's something you can look at. There's pluses and minuses, you know, pros and cons to having part-time officers along with, with full-time officers.
One option we could look at, I've looked at just about every scheduling format you could possibly think of in my time here, to try to look for, for different ways that would be reducing costs. The closest that I could find, or the one that I can find that would work, close to what we're doing now as far as coverage goes, and, and probably perhaps even give us a little bit better coverage in the street. And it would significantly reduce overtime, to be perfectly honest with you, would require the addition of one additional officer. But to be perfectly honest, we would have just, the vast majority of their salary would be covered by a reduction of hours that are currently basically automatically paid to the officers because of their twelve-hour schedules.
That's what I'm saying is, I mean, if we're already spending a hundred thousand dollars or whatever it was in overtime, why not just hire one extra person or something? I mean, that's, that's what I don't get is.
If council would consider that, I would be more than happy to.
If it's a hundred and fifty thousand and you could spend eighty, ninety thousand to have one extra person or forty thousand on two floats or something that you can reduce the overtime hours, it just seems like we should at least look.
We can look at it.
I mean, and I get the idea that we, you know, there's overtime and it's extra money and all that stuff. But we want to save money, but to the safety factor too, is I was just listening on the radio coming over and they were talking about Chicago and these cops that had fallen asleep and, you know, everybody on the radio is, well, they work so hard. We don't want, we don't want them overworked. If there's one, you know, there's a few businesses or occupations out there, you know, your surgeon and your, and your, your police officers, you don't want them overtired. So I don't want to get to a point either where we have, you know, X amount of overtime either. So I don't know. I, it would be worth, I guess, running a cost on some other scheduling. Like I said, the point I was going down with the hospitals and stuff, they, they bring in nurses that are part-time. They get paid more, but don't have benefits. Their hours are flexible. I would say, I mean, their, their education requirements and stuff are probably similar to being a police officer. So the demand for that might be something that's out there. I don't know. I guess, I don't know if there's, I know there's a demand for nurses, there's a demand for police officers. I don't know. It just seems like we can think about overtime differently than just.
Look at that, and the chief and I can look and can see what, what that might pencil out to be if, if we did go to that alternate schedule and, and add an officer. And if, what that, what that look at, look like. And the one thing, we're, I hate to say this again, but we're a little bit unique as far as with hiring part-time officers here as well because we don't typically, what you see is part-time officers come from a couple of different spaces. They're either, one, young officers that are trying to get some experience. Two, they're maybe retired police officers that, you know, want to get some extra cash or, or whatever. Or they're officers from another, from another city that want to get extra money that maybe doesn't have a lot of overtime availability or wherever where they're working. So that will, they'll work as a part-timer in another city. That, so based on those three main areas where you get them, we're a little bit limited because the ones from Grand Forks that would maybe want to pick up some extra time if they're not getting here, they would have to then become licensed here in the state of Minnesota. And the other ones would have to travel a little bit of a distance, meaning probably our closest would be Crookston. That would hire some, maybe Thief River Falls. So we, we could, but I guess what I'm saying is, is that the biggest drawback I see for going to a part-time here with our particular situation is we would probably have a hard time keeping them, keeping that staffed. But.
That is, for, for the few agencies in this area that use part-time, Ada is, is one example. It, they typically are revolving door for those part-time positions. About the time you get them training, they're, they're leaving. And that's, that's the biggest issue from just the casual conversation.
I'd say this is a lot better location to be at than Ada. I mean, you're telling.
Majority, majority of those people that are in the part-time positions aren't lucky to stay in overtime. There's other, other than those retirement age folks that might be willing to. I'd be more than happy to.
I guess my point is, is if, if we can spend a hundred thousand dollars to save fifty. I guess, my point is, is if, if we can spend $100,000 to save $50,000, it's worth a study or a look into.
Yeah, I see your point, and I think the chief and I, we can do that.
That's just one department, we could, Public Works might have the same issue.
No.
Are you down a truck?
Since we're 24/7, that makes us, you know, our, our personnel costs are obviously the largest in the city without question.
I think it might be good if individuals, we as individuals could approach Mr. Murphy, Ms. Anderson, and talk about individual items, just for our own curiosity. I know there are certain questions I might have in the back of my mind that I just need more information. It isn't a matter of, of in any way not wanting to have this conversation right out there, but I just need to fill in a few more blanks in my own mind about certain things so that I can best contribute to the conversation. Some of these went up and down, and I would like to come by and, and just ask, again, what, what made that one go up, what made that one go down? And someone else might have a whole different batch of questions. And so it would be better, I think, to go to them individually if we can, or even with an email or a phone call, just personally, not to the whole group with open meeting laws, but just gathering information, and by all means, take the time to do it. And each one familiarize yourself best you can with each of the individual departments.
The pack of the paperclip items I gave you today, there is some, there's from the park, and there's some of police and from ADA with reasons why they're going up. Or, you know, so, there, there is a narrative for those departments in the little paperclip tonight. Sorry they got missed.
Are you gonna bring in the rest of the departments then that aren't included, or do you have all of them in here?
Not everybody did.
The other ones didn't do narratives, so...
Could you request it? For those who haven't done it?
We could. Typically, the ones that haven't done a narrative are fairly, they're less complex, are less moving parts than the ones that, that did the narrative. For example, like...
Oh, I could, I could certainly give you the narrative on transit for the city's time, if you so choose. I can just re-copy that RCA that you've seen six times.
When is our max levy due? When do we have to?
Our preliminary levy? Usually it's in September, what's this year?
I think it's September 29th, but it would have to be, the last meeting, I think, is the 18th, regular scheduled meeting. So we'd have to have a levy set by then unless we had a special meeting. Because that would be the second council meeting.
I think that's what we need to do, I mean, I think we need to absorb this and come back and ask, because I don't have...
Yeah, ask, any questions you have, please.
Don't have the magic answer, magic question of thought.
So Mayor, you put, you put out a kind of a questionnaire, or I guess, maybe it was a thought piece, is there, are you looking for a formal discussion on that, or is that just for our own individual thought, or do you want to have a discussion on that? Yeah, you've probably noticed that I touched on several of these just in conversation, and we do not have to have like a point-by-point, what did you answer for number two, Mr. Vedder? No, we don't need to do anything like, it was to just like kick off our thoughts, and really, you can start to boil this down, you can, you can come at it from there to what are we gonna do with the levies? What are we gonna do with the reserve balance? What are we gonna do, any additional revenues we can find? And now you just, it all drops into a spreadsheet, and that's the bottom line, you have all of your answers, in theory, when you've really worked through those, those various points. So that's really all I was hoping to do, kind of like what we're saying, is to, to initiate just the background kind of thinking that we would put into coming up with then a final budget. And not be, you know, not be pigeonholed at the end, but to be very intentional, intentional about the levy, intentional about spending, intentional if there would be some other revenue or the sale of an asset, you know, not in a matter of like, we're in a corner, what do we do? Well, lurch and we'll do that, no, to be more methodical, more intentional, and so you can use the wisdom and, and make the best decisions.
Nothing is too small and nothing is too great, right?
Right.
I'd like to make a comment. Dave?
Yes.
We've got the highest rating now that we can get for a city of our size, bond rating, am I correct?
Uh, no, not the absolute highest.
Yes, yes.
Is it the highest we get with this all? Okay.
Yeah, typically that, that's true.
I think there's two things that you want to remember, is that there's gonna be projects in the future. We want a high bond rating because it, it, it makes a big difference. And another thing is, we want to keep the infrastructure up. There are cities that are in serious trouble all over Minnesota, they haven't kept the infrastructure up. And Jason Stordahl, he knows these streets like the back of his hand. He, he's out there, he knows what we should be doing. But the thing is that that indicates a stranger coming in here, there's management. And if a stranger can come in here and he doesn't, he's not impressed, well, then we're not where we should be. That's the difference. And it's taken us a while to get there, but one thing we also want to remember, there's not gonna be Uncle Sam bailing us out if we get a major disaster, we're gonna have to go it alone. So we've got to keep that money up there.
Along, along kind of that line, Henry, almost every day now with our flower pots in full bloom, almost every day, someone pulls me aside and says how beautiful our city is, the flowers, the downtown, you know, and that, that civic pride that they have for this community actually makes them proud to live here, it makes them, in a way, very willing and happy to pay the property taxes that they pay for the services and the feel and the look and, and the, you know, the pride that they can have in this community. We felt really good when the snow melted and nobody fell in a pothole. You know, we do such a good job on our streets over here, right? And that's a, it's, it's not a flashy thing, but it's one of those things that we do that, that make people say, you know what, just like you said, from a management standpoint, you are disciplined to take care of what needs to be taken care of. So all the way from the, the streets and the basic stuff, all the way up to the swimming pool, where the parents say, you know what, my kids had a good day out in the sun today. I don't know what else I'd have done with my 12 and 14-year-old, they were driving me nuts, but they came back from the pool and they were all happy. You know, those are those kind of things that, that families appreciate, and it makes them feel good about paying for the services that they want.
Well, you've got, you've got a number of other factors too here. We've got economic factors, the overall economy and so forth. But the, with all these national disasters, the federal is gonna run out of money. There's too many of them, and it's constant all over the country.
All right, I think we got everything. Motion adjourned.
Boo.
Who by Vedder, second by you pal?
Second.
One favor, say aye.
Aye.
Paul, same sign, motion carried, means adjourned.
Well, you laid it out very good, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you.
Carlos.
It's one of the nice homes over by, beside Christian School.
I noticed these were, came out of Mexico. I wonder how, how they got in here.
Yeah, it says erasable right on it.